CTE-specific EMC pathways, since all of our CTE classes already articulate for college credit, this allows that first year at William D. Ford to count into that EMC credit. So they can actually enroll in 11th grade and not have that college, that there's not that college barrier, that fear of that, and we can really coach them through the CTE experience into the, that, into the early college. We wanted to also redesign our enrollment process since we sort of built it on the fly last year, and we are, worked with Communications to start to develop a marketing plan for this moving forward. We were very successful in increasing post-secondary partnerships. Dr. O'Feely will tell you, there's a lot of memos on his desk right now that I'm waiting for, both on our side and partner sides. But essentially, Wayne County Community College District, we're continuing our partnership with them that we established last year in 2022. We have three offerings that, we're expanding our offerings from not just an Associate of Arts this year, but we're also adding those two CTE programs in fire protection technology and a certificate in emergency medical technology as an option next year. Lawrence Technical, Technological University, we are establishing an EMC partnership starting in 2023. Our key program that we will first offer is an Associate of Computer Science, and this is fantastic because this layers with an existing initiative in Wayne Westland, the Blue Devil Promise Scholarship. So our students will finish the Associate at no cost to families, and if they choose to continue on in their, to earn their BS, they will qualify for that half tuition scholarship. So they will complete a four-year degree for the cost of one year at Lawrence Technical, Technological University.
Then real quick, I'm going to add in, we have 50 of those annually that they've awarded us.
Yeah. Another, Madonna University has come to the table to partner with us in 23, 2023, and we have developed a certificate in STEM education, and we actually helped them establish that certificate in STEM education. So students that go through that will have essentially their major done for their education coursework as they complete that. They're creating some scholarship opportunities for our students that choose to stay and finish their BA with them, and this really aligns to the Dr. Dignan's Grow Your Own programming that he and Dr. O'Feely are working on. Schoolcraft is yet another college that has really come to the table, and they have been very helpful and very innovative in working with us. We sat down with them and created an Associate of Arts that will, provides a three-way agreement with Michigan, I mean with Eastern Michigan University. So our students that create the, take, do the Associate of Arts pathway will then trans, can transfer to Eastern Michigan University. Every single credit is accepted in full, and because of the partnership that exists with Eastern Michigan University, those students can complete their four-year degree in a variety of fields at no cost to families. We also have wanted to give up students opportunities to specialize, so the Associates in Business Administration, Computer Information Systems, and Criminal Justice also are available for them. Really important about that, Associates in Applied Science and Criminal Justice, is that that does culminate with the Police Academy, which is in alignment with some of Dr. Dignan's initiatives that he will be bringing forward in the near future. Knowing that getting all the way to the Associates can be challenging for some of our kids, they've also created certificate programs which will get the kids industry credentials, really saying that, yes, I have a background in general business and computer information systems. It allows them to take that away and come back to education when it makes sense for them. What I really love about this is that WWIA vision of how do we make this virtual? All of these options are virtual through to the end of 12th grade. They only have to go onsite if they want or in the track, that includes the Police Academy, and for two science lab classes in the rest of the programs. So for our students that are maybe building phobic or health impaired, this is a super option for them. Henry Ford Community College, or I'm sorry, they're Henry Ford College now, is our newest partner at the table, and we, looking at those CTE EMC programs, are developing an HVAC and an education pathway with them. What's really nice is this gives our students yet another opportunity for that four-year because they have an established three-way agreement with Wayne State University, who just announced last week that any families that make under $70,000 a year have access to free tuition there. So this gives us definite pathways to three different four-year universities with minimal cost to our families. Moving into 2024, what are we going to be working on? We're going to really start to expand those opportunities with existing post-secondary partners. I'm probably going to pause on looking for more post-secondary partners, but let's really plant, the seeds what we have planted, let's really grow those, especially in those CTE EMC pathways. We're going to be looking at developing CTE EMC pathways in game design and programming, health occupations, law and public safety, and again HVAC. We are, sorry, going to, on November 9th, present our early college to the MEMCA board for certification, and new this year, students who participate in early middle of college are eligible for National Junior College Athletic Association. So we're going to do some exploration about what does that really mean? We got a lot of questions from families around athletic participation this year, and that was some of the reasons some of our students did drop out of the application process. That, the NJCAA eligibility just came out in Ju, January, so I haven't had a chance to learn a lot about that yet. So I'm really excited to see what we can do for some students who maybe are looking for ways to play college sports but haven't really been discovered quite yet. Finally, moving into the last year of our three-year long-term plan, is we're going to continue to expand our post-secondary, our options with our post-secondary partners, establishing CTE EMC pathways specifically in robotics and engineering, our newest program at Career Tech, and in architectural design and drafting. I should note that it is a two-step process. We have to establish the early college, and then to make sure that we're maximizing our access to funding, once you have that established, then you can establish the CTE EMC pathway to, to become eligible for 61B funding. So that's why it seems like a longer process and why things are taking multiple years. We have to establish it, and then we have to apply to the state to sort of put a gold star on it. We are going to design, so at the CT, at CTC Nextdoor, we have a lot of secondary partners, and I would love to be able to make our CTE EMC programs available to all the students who walk through the door there. So by, by the end of school year 2025, we hope to have a plan in place to be able to welcome all students regardless of what their homeschool is into those CTE EMC tracks. And we are going to invite our CTE secondary partners in for discussions to figure, to determine if they're interested in participating. Thank you for your time. What questions might you have?
Thank you. Questions? Mel?
I just have a statement. I'd like to thank everyone who's involved in this. This is amazing. It's very important to start in ninth grade because a lot of times, you know, you want to have time to be able to figure out what you want to do. You might change your mind. I always tell people my story about Upper Bound, you know, that was an amazing program, starting off in ninth grade, going to college over the summer, getting credits. You know, I was able to be a reserve police officer in high school, you know, then I went to Saginaw Valley through a criminal justice, a summer program through Upper Bound. So these programs are very beneficial to our children. So I'd like to thank everybody, you know, the staff for, you know, your hard work and your dedication to the students because it does change lives. So thank you so much for that work that you do.
Thank you, Mel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, 234.23, is citizens' comments on agenda items. Anybody wishing to address the Board of Education on items which appear on tonight's agenda? This is the time to do so. Is there anyone? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda, 235.23, is there a motion on consent?
Some move.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Is there support? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show seven, zero, motion passes.
Thank you, Mel. 236.23 is Board of Education Committee reports. Mrs. May, Finance Committee?
Thank you. Good evening. The Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools was held Thursday, March 9th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM via Zoom platform. Mr. Spiezack requested approval to liquidate four vehicles that are past their prime. Mr. Spiezack also presented the award recommendation for generators for Wayne Memorial, Adams, the Dyer Center, and Stottlemyre, and Mr. Spiezack shared the bid for the installation of playground equipment. Mrs. Cleves shared additional information regarding the Law Enforcement Academy. She also presented the investment report and the monthly check register. Mrs. Cleves provided an informational update on an upcoming grant and shared comments on behalf of Dr. Dignan. The meeting was adjourned at 4:46 PM. The next Finance Committee meeting will take place on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023 via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. May. 237.23 on our agenda is a review and approval of Business Service and Finance. Mrs. Cleves?
Good evening. I am requesting Board approval to liquidate district maintenance vehicles. There are four vehicles. These items being liquidated are obsolete or are in need of major repair. If approved, all items will be auctioned through a third-party auction company, and the proceeds will go to the general fund account.
Is there a motion to liquidate?
Support.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, supported by Dr. Weaver. Is there discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show seven, zero, motion passes.
Thank you.
Based upon the results of a public bid opening which was held on March 2nd, 2023 via Zoom meeting, I am requesting Board approval to award contracts for the emergency generator project. It's for four sites, Adams Middle School, Wayne Memorial High School, Stottlemyre, Early Childhood Center, and Dyer Administration Building. It's for plumbing and electrical work, and the total award recommendation amount is $1,140,183 and will be charged to grant funds.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion, is that Ms. May?
Hines.
Ms. Hines, I'm sorry.
Support.
Is that you, Dr. Weaver? Support, discussion? Roll call vote please, Mel.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show seven, zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Based upon the results of a public bid opening that was held on March 8th, 2023 via Zoom meeting, I am requesting Board approval to award the contract to Michigan Recreational Construction. This is for playground equipment installation for Edison, Elliott, Hamilton, Hicks, Roosevelt, and Switzer Elementary Schools. The total award recommendation amount is $1,559,250 and will be charged to grant funds.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Dr. Weaver?
Support.
Ms. Hines?
Support. Hines. Sorry.
Is there discussion? Roll call vote please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Seven, zero, let the record show motion carries.
Thank you. 238.23 is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dignan?
Thanks, President Cox. Just first off, I'd like to thank Lily and Jack Barber for leading us off on the pledge this evening. Also, the athletic programs at both Wayne Memorial and John Glenn. It's nice to hear all the accolades and how well our kids are doing. I want to thank everybody here on our team that did all the presentations. We're proud of the accomplishments, but again, it happens by working together. I just want to do a couple of quick announcements. The Wayne Westland CCR Department and Wayne Westland Upper Bound are holding a college fair this Thursday from 8:30 to 10:30. As Mr. Beebe talked about, we are going to have all of our 10th graders that want to participate, participate, as well as students from Wayne Westland Innovative Academy. I want to congratulate Dr. Mary Jenkins, Assistant Principal at John Glenn High School, for winning the Wayne State's highest alumni award, the Homer D. Strong Award. We're very proud of her accomplishments, and this is over a span of 29 years in education. Our Building Trades classes at Career Tech are working with the Westland Historic Museum. They are talking about building a gazebo, pavilion, and kind of rehabbing some houses on their sites. We're excited about the product, project, and it's our kids and in community partners coming together. She didn't know I was interviewing this, but Gwen, who's out there, was recently honored, which is accepted in the 8th Annual Friends of the National World War II Memorial. This is a prestigious honor. She's going to attend Washington DC this summer, and again, we're proud of her, so Some other people were stealing my thunder, so I had to cancel, cross some things out. I, I just want to talk about our Community Projects Grant Award. The money finally dropped from Rashida Talib. I want to thank her by giving our kids opportunities and internships and job shadowing opportunities is going to expose them to careers and, and work that they wouldn't have. We've been lining this up for really two, the last two and a half years since I got here, so I'm really excited. We were just awarded another grant from Representative Talib that I will bring in front of the Board. It's for 3.5 million. So again, these grants are making a huge difference throughout the course of our whole district. I want to congratulate the Wayne Westland Robotics Alliance. It's the first year we've had a team, and, and they actually were awarded at Wayne State a few weeks ago, the Highest Rookie Seed Award. There were over 40 robotics teams that are well-established. We had a Wayne Westland team that entered in, and, and they did quite well, so we're very proud of them. We also have something coming up. The planning's going to happen after spring break. It's the Wayne Memorial Wall of Honor. What we want to do is honor our alumni and our veterans, who really, the, the high school itself was memorialized for veterans from World War II, the Korean War. It's, it's an opportunity for us to kind of connect our past history to where we're going. We are in on a grant. I can't, I don't know whether or not we'll get it, but if we do, there's an outside memorial that we want to honor all of our veterans from the different wars that we fought in. But again, we'll have more information coming on this, but we're very excited about this project. I want to thank all those involved in our elementary athletics. This past weekend, we had over 300 kids compete in basketball, over 200 in cheer, and 24 teams competed. But most importantly, we had over 1,000-plus fans of family members, whether it was a mother, dad, uncles, aunts, grandparents that attend the game. When we said we were going to do it on Saturday when we first started, people said we couldn't do it, but we knew that by doing it on Saturday, it gives people an opportunity to come out and watch their kids play. So again, I want to thank our activity coordinators, staff, administration. I'm going to lead off to something Jacinda was talking about, robotics and engineering. We were awarded a grant last year from SME out of Southfield for a half million dollars. They're giving us the latest robotics and small energy, small engineering equipment. They also let us in the FAME program, which is a Federation of Small Manufacturing. They've had a lot of success in Florida. They're going to allow 10 of our kids to participate. They're going to pay them a pretty handsome salary and train them along small manufacturing. It's a partnership with Toyota, the Orbit Forum, Lamar, and Washtau Community College. So they're going to pay for our kids to be in this internship, but they're going to pay for them to go back in school and get a degree in Megatronics. So we're very excited about that. Last thing is, the Community of Champion Breakfast is going to be May 24th at 10:00 AM. We're going to do it at the Soho Banquet Center. We're going to invite all of our community partners, corporations, higher learning. We're going to honor everyone, our staff. It's going to be a pretty great event. And then, as Maria talked about, we locked in height for Discover Your Path, which is on May 18th. We're targeting all 8th graders and students at the IA. The thing I want to talk about is, it's a hands-on experience. So we're looking at 60 to 75 vendors and skilled trades and court reporting and, and careers. Because some of our kids might not want to go to college and jump into apprenticeship or employment. We're giving this, this opportunity, but the biggest thing is they get to use their hands and touch it and feel it, as Mr. Beebe was talking about. Because again, they're going to have the people that recruit for these apprenticeships there so our kids can talk to them. I'll leave it on that note, and again, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. The next item on our agenda, 239.23, is citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for addressing the Board of Education on any issue at all. And I have several people that would like to address. We'll begin with Tonya Karpinski. And just a reminder, we've reserved three minutes for each person. Well, Tonya? Hi, nice to see you.
Hi.
How are you?
Good evening. Nice to see all of you again, and I, first of all, thank you. It was some great presentations, and it's always exciting to see all the positive things happening. I also want to thank all of our members here in support of a topic that is perhaps creating not such positive ripples throughout the district, and so we're here to share a little information on that. As I'm sure most of you are aware, that in 2011, the legislatures enacted 1248-15J. That was one of the many items that were enacted on that put all kinds of restrictions on our ability to bargain over things that had previously been bargained and had existed in contracts between the employer and the union for years. This particular item involves the prohibition on bargaining over teacher placements and assignments. So it gives the sole authority to the employer to determine where staff are placed. We understand that's the law. We understand that we can't bargain over that. The concern that has brought many of these faces out here tonight that you see in front of you is in regards to although this is the law, the impact of that law and the ripple effect it has on the other side when it's implemented can cause unfortunate ripples across the district in regards to teachers and how they feel with being valued, with how they feel with their sense of security. As you are also aware, we are continually facing year after year more shortages in this profession. And when we are facing those shortages, it has been a goal of the Board and of the union to work together and to partner together through negotiations to do what we can to not only attract new staff to this district, but to retain those that we have. And when we, oh, was that a, sorry, I thought my, that was a three-minute alarm.
No. I'll tell you.
So when we do those things that, in this case, is in regards to Mr. Ron Staples, 38-year employee with the district, he'll be speaking to you tonight, but, and share his experience about being involuntarily transferred just a few weeks ago this year, his last year with the district, and the impact that has had on him. But you will also hear from the loss of sense of security, instability, and value that it causes the other teachers as part of that. So I saw that signal. I wanted you to know that staff are feeling that loss of sense of security when they receive an assignment, and knowing now that through experiences they've seen from their fellow colleagues, that that assignment can be revoked and changed at any time. There, there are ripple impacts, but just because you can do something doesn't mean you should.
Thank you, Tonya.
Yeah.
Mr. Staples?
I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Dr. Dignan, you made a quote today. You said, and I quote, "You just can't say nothing. Nothing gets done unless we work together." My case to death did not happen. On February 27th, approximately 4:30 PM, I received a phone call while driving to my car. It was Dr. O'Feely, O'Feely, and he said, "Ron, are you coming back to work?" I said, "Yes, I am. I can't wait." I thought he was going to thank me for coming back to John Glenn. He said, "No, you're going to Franklin." I said, "I have three months to go. I want to stay at Glenn." "No, you're going to Franklin." How is that working together, Dr. Dignan, when you say nothing gets done unless we work together? Nothing was in writing. I got a call on the cell phone. Nobody talked to me. My own administrator did not come to see me that week at all. He stayed away from me. I seen him every day and talked to him most, most every day down by the gym, and he stayed I just came off a medical. I was in a boot. I was looking forward to coming back to John Glenn early. I still am in a boot. It's the first day I had the boot up, only to come to this meeting. I didn't want to limp in here with a boot. I met Franklin. I didn't get a transfer orientation. I showed up on Monday to do my job as a professional after 37.9 years. He just gave all the coaches and the, the sports teams their rightfully praise. Both ADs said that the students acted professionally. The students represented their school. I've represented this district. I went to Elliott Elementary School. I went to Adams Junior High. I graduated from Wayne Memorial, 1976. I believe Wayne Westland schools. I know people on the Board. I've had their kids as students. This was wrong. After 38 years ending my career, I feel very disappointed on how this whole thing was handled. We should have had a meeting and talked face to face. At the beginning of the year, Mr. Dr. Dignan, you had all the phys ed teachers in the building in an office, and I remember what you said to me, "Hey, are you going to retire?" I said, "Probably." But you did say a good statement. You said, "My door is always open."
Ron, please address yourself to the chair, okay?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There was a meeting, and he said his door is always, was always open. My door is open. I would have loved to met with you guys and discuss why this happened, but that didn't happen.
That's your time, Ron.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're always willing to hear you. Mr. Don Harris?
Hello, my agent backside or his chairs?
Hello, Don.
Hello. Evening, I'm Don Harris, President of the Teachers Association. I'm here to express the concern of involuntary transfers. In the 12 years I've been in this position, teachers were not voluntarily, involuntarily transferred. This happened three times this year. It may be legal, but that does not mean it's the right thing to do. Most, the most recent transfer appeared to be enlightening because now teachers are expressing there may be, they may be the next one moved to fill some open position they are certified for. This brought panic, this brought suspicion on the, on the administration, this created unstable environment with the culture of fear. Staff are even worried about things they said in the past that may affect their current position. The, the district needs to stop involuntary transfers. The last couple of contracts have brought Wayne Westland to a leading position on contracts which help foster retention and attraction of new staff. Making arbitrary decisions to transfer only detracts from retaining our staff as well as recruitment for Wayne Westland. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Steve Khan?
Hey, I'm Steve Khan, I'm Vice President of the Teachers Association here in Wayne Westland, a proud product of Wayne Westland schools, and we're here because, not just because we love Ron, and we appreciate Ron, and we respect him. And we're here because, not just because we love Ron, and we appreciate Ron, and we respect Ron, but I don't want to be transferred tomorrow. Your science teachers aren't here. Sherry, Kelly, Charlie, they all gave great presentations tonight. All of that depends on our teachers. They're scared to death. There's an opening right now at Franklin Middle School where they sent Ron, and the reasoning was, well, we need stability there after the recent accident. There's a science opening, none of our science teachers are here because they're scared that their face is going to be here, and they're going to be transferred tomorrow to teach science at Franklin. All right? None of those programs that we heard here tonight, and they're all awesome, and I'm proud of it, and I love our district. None of that's going to happen without our staff, without our teacher buy-in. Yes, the Republicans passed many laws through the years that screwed us as a union, as a teacher, collective bargaining, all right? None of them were right. None of them been enforced until this year. None of them been put into action until right now. That's not okay, all right? Ron Staples, stand-up guy. 38 years in this district, still lives in this district. All his kids went through this district. An elder at First Baptist Church in Wayne. Coached every sport under the sun in our district. Didn't pocket that money, but donated it to the church and to charities. If that happens to Ron, that could happen to Natalie here. That could happen to Gwen. That could happen to me. That could happen to Carrie. We're worried, and we're upset, and we're scared, and it needs to be known. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next is Shannon Pipa. Did I pronounce that correctly?
It's Pipa, but it's fine. I get pipebub. Pipa's pretty good. Thanks. So, I'm Shannon Pipa. I've been a teacher at Wayne High for 22 years. I don't know Mr. Staples, but when I heard that you were involuntarily transferring after a medical leave, it made me think about my own experiences. And so, I wanted to talk about involuntary transfers in the context of medical leaves. I know it's allowed, but I don't think it's right for someone to come back from medical leave and be blindsided by a change in position. I've had four medical leaves in my 22-year career, two to give birth to my children, and two for severe health diagnoses. In a field dominated by women and dedicated to caring for our youngest citizens, no mother should fear coming back to be blindsided by an involuntary transfer in a time when she's learning how to care for a new person. During my cancer treatments, I was very lucky to have a staff and admin who knew me as a person and knew me as an educator. The staff at Wayne High 15 years ago donated enough money that they paid for frozen meals for me for months and made to clean my house. I don't cook, but my husband does, so it helped him out a lot. But colleagues don't determine my employment status. Admin determine that. I was very lucky in both instances to have admin who had known me for years. But our admin has changed a lot, especially at Wayne High. I don't know what my reputation is with them, to be honest. But I didn't fear for my job at those times when I was fearing for my life. And I'm thankful for that, very thankful. In 2022, Rand did a study and found that educators experience stress at two times the rate of other professions. That's when we are working, not when we're on a medical leave fearing for other things. In a caretaking profession dedicated to meeting Maslow's hierarchy of needs before Bloom's taxonomy of learning and thinking for our children, admin has to do that much for teachers that they employ, or we can't do that work for kids. Thanks.
Ed McGovern?
Good evening, Dr. Cox and Board of Education. I'm also here to talk a little bit about people who are in fear. I am reading this statement on someone who's afraid to speak for themselves. "Good evening. I'm sharing this on behalf..." Oh, I should have said I'm from Wayne High. I'm sorry. "Good evening. I'm sharing this on behalf of what I would consider the voiceless. I recently was considering leaving the Wayne Westland Community School District. While this district has afforded me the opportunity to excel in my passion for working with children outside of just the basketball court, despite being underappreciated, undervalued, I've always done what I can to perform beyond my call of duty because of my love and care of the students and staff I worked with daily since 2018. This was disheartening and disappointing. Previously, this district was known for allowing the advancement of internal employees and to be overlooked for a position because I did not fit the profile of a white male, while although on paper I was more than qualified for the job at hand, made me second-guess my purpose in this district. I ask that you all reconsider fairness in employment advancement so that great people do not think twice about what and who they are to the kiddos in this district. We all may not have a background in football, but deserve a fighting chance to show the greatness we possess within and working with the future leaders of this wonderful district. Fortunately, things aligned to keep me in this district, and my pursuit to continue working with the students and staff I know value what I provide. But what happens when the kiddos in this district lose their person because the right decision doesn't align itself?" And again, unfortunately, this is for someone who'd be feared retribution and speaking on their own behalf.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite Dave Delp up to the lectern.
It's Dave Daly from John Glenn High School, speaking on behalf of myself in regards to this whole situation with Mr. Ron Staples. "Good evening, Wayne Westland Community School District Board. I'm here tonight..." Oh, I should say that I wrote this out because I have to write everything down as an English teacher. Two pages is a minimum for my students and myself, so I made them small pages. I know that burned 20 seconds. "I'm here tonight as an educator of 15 years who found a home in Wayne Westland five years ago. In this time, I have discovered my space at John Glenn High School to be one that strengthens my purpose as an educator and in that my need to my students and school community. When hired, I had many offers, but what stood out to me for this assignment in particular was the commitment of our staff, the diversity, and the potential of my students. Our schools here are like families, and the greatest power of staff retention lies in the stability we offer our students. Family, stability, those go hand in hand. Retention is all about stability. It's in these practices that our students can focus on their own growth and the learning tasks we set before them. Creating abrupt removal of staff jeopardizes everything we work for, especially in disrupting our students' progress with distractions. The day my students found out that Mr. Staples was leaving, that Friday, I teach six-hour English, a lot of student athletes, very student-minded students, very academically well-off, established. They couldn't focus like any other day that I've had them in my class. They've been with me all the way through this SAT prep. This is their junior year. This is serious for them. It took them 25 minutes to stop talking about this. What's going to happen to Mr. Staples? Why did this happen? What's going on? These are the distractions that create instability in our education environment. This is not what we do. This is not what retention is about. It's undoubtedly a distraction when a staff member is transferred without warning. These actions make me and many others question whether or not our space in Wayne Westland is our home. For this, I rise to speak against transferring a staff during the middle of a school year. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. My apologies for mispronouncing your name. That's all the sheets I have. Does anyone else wish to address the board on any issue at all? Okay, move on to next item on our agenda, which is the review and recommendations members of the Board of Education. Ms. Ebony Mitchell?
Well, I would like to just say thank you to the Wayne Westland School athletes, the coaches, the parents, the grandparents. And you know, being an athlete is a lot of... It's a hard job, but being a parent of an athlete is even a harder job. My granddaughter's winter guard team, they performed on Sunday in Troy. Unfortunately, because we had an event at church, I wasn't able to go. But when they was all here at John Glenn on Sunday, the bus was late. And so, the way that the parents and the coaches got together to get those kids ready to go perform in Troy, and they came in fifth out of... Is it fifth out of 10th? And it's just like, you know, you have to commend the athlete. You have to commend the coaches. We talking about on a Sunday. You know, coaches are parents who they have families, and the way that they take our children up under their skin and provide for them and make sure that they have everything that they need. And coming from a youth football team in my community, being on staff, I understand that. And it's extra. It's extra. It's a lot. And I just like to commend the coaches, the parents that had to change their schedule. The coaches, they had to be the parents. And I just like to commend them. And the other thing that I have tonight is it is Monday, Mental Health Day, and I just want to, you know, let everybody know we all go through different things. Our children, ourselves as parents, as adults, as professionals. And you can always reach out to 988, 24 hours hotline for any crisis that you may go to. There's also a text number, and we have resources on the Wayne Westland website for more resources if you need them. But it's okay to be blue sometimes, but if you find yourself being blue more than you are happy, it's something that maybe you want to do. Our mental health is just as important as our physical health. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Juan, I wanted to ask you, you're taking over head start. When it comes to pass, when you have meetings, if there's something that you'd like to bring back and share with the board, let me know, and we'll set it on the agenda, and you can do a report, just like finance or policy.
Okay, well, I sent it on the agenda, but our meeting was canceled.
Okay.
So, I didn't have anything, but thank you.
All right, all right. Ms. Spang?
Thank you. Good evening again. I'd just like to take a few moments to just say thank you to Lilly and Jack for leading us in the pledge, as well as to Malia and Alasia. It takes a lot of courage to stand up here and to speak, and especially when you come into the room tonight and you see your teachers and just so many people in a packed room. And so, it took a great deal of courage for those young people to stand before us and do that. I'd also like to just congratulate and just honor our student athletes. It was such a pleasure just to see them here tonight and to hear of all the things that they are accomplishing, not just as athletes, but again, as students. And so, that speaks to not only their dedication to sports, but their dedication to their academics and what their goals are. The other piece is just thanking the presenters from the Holocaust Center. I thought that was very informative, and I really appreciated hearing that there was a professional development opportunity for the plant engineers because that really speaks to the learning taking place across all levels and that everyone is responsible for diversity, equity, and inclusion, that we're not just putting it on our classroom teachers. We're saying to everyone, "Have your eyes open, have your ears open, be a part of a community that we're all one. We're not separated." And so, that was something I was really happy to hear. I'm also appreciative of the presentations tonight. Very informative, very good information, letting us know what's going on in the district, letting us know how our funds are being used and how those resources are utilized. Again, I ask a question about a homeschool connection, and that's just something that for me, I think is very important. Everything that we do, we have to connect the home, and that we won't always get buy-in, but we don't know that until we try. And I think it was... I think it was Mr. Bibi. I wrote down what you said about you can't see it until you see it. And that's... And to me, that applies with families, right? Like, we can't say what they won't do if we don't give them the information to do it. So, I think that piece is important, and I think we're on a great trajectory in terms of increasing or, yeah, increasing our student growth in terms of our academics. But that's something that we can't do alone. Teachers can't do it alone. Superintendent can't do it alone. The board can't do it alone. It's a community effort, and so, I think that piece is important. And that is all I have for this evening, other than just saying thank you. Thank you to the teachers that came out tonight to just express your feelings and what you're concerned with. That takes a great deal of courage, and so, thank you for that. And again, thank you to our students that came out.
Thank you, Ms. Spang. Madam Secretary?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate all the teams. I'm super excited. I actually have them on my Instagram and Facebook, so I get like a little announcements like on Instagram when we have like Wayne Westland, like amazing events with our students always posted on my page to be a big cheerleader for the school district. I definitely always go out into the community and like I met a guy. I did a MISTA seminar today out at School Craft College, and I met a guy. His kid is in Dearborn, but he just moved to Westland. So, I'm like, "Hey, come to the board meeting," you know? So, I'm always out there trying to actively recruit people to our district because of the amazing programs that we have here. I definitely like the presentations about the learning objectives. You know, it's really nice to be able to, you know, come out of high school with college credits. That's really amazing, just the innovative, outside-of-the-box type things that we do in Wayne Westland. State of the art. Definitely appreciate the college career readiness. Definitely appreciate all the studies that you guys have done, like the work to improve test scores, working with the Michigan Association of School Boards. We've been to a lot of conferences where we're talking about, you know, with the test scores and how to, you know, make things better. It's like the challenge of, you know, the test scores and trying to get it to that certain level when you have a lot of things that come against the students. So, I definitely like that you guys are really sitting down, spending your time, you know, a lot of personal time that you can be with your families to make sure that our kids are hitting those goals. I definitely would like to let the students know that there is an event coming up. It's called the Motor City Community Fundraiser, and it's connecting the youth to the communities with the Detroit Pistons. It's going to be March, it's on a Monday, 27th, 2023, at Little Caesars Arena from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So, it's going to be a community basketball tournament, kidpreneur, small business, and nonprofit fundraiser. There's going to be some guest speakers. The person that's heading it up is Natasha Lee. The phone number for her is 313-854-9528. You can get some more information at iam-thatgirl.com. And I'm actually excited that same night I will be receiving an award at the Pistons game, at the pregame at 6:00 following the kidpreneur program. So, it's really exciting. It's going to be Monday, March 27th, at 6:00 at the pregame. So, I'll be getting a That Girl Award at the Pistons game, so super excited.
So, you're going to get an award of the basketball? I bet no one thought that was going to happen.
Yeah, I know, right?
Mr. Neal?
Yes, well, thanks to those people who did speak on an issue that you're very concerned about. Bringing awareness to the situation does help, helps everybody to understand what's going on. And I admire your effort. My history is strong in the union as well as management. I was my union president for 11 years, and I was a fire chief for several years as well. So, I have the benefit of seeing some perspective from both. I mean, I spent more than a decade trying to fight for certain things that by labor law I was not allowed to fight for or change, and it can be frustrating. But by the same token, when I was fire chief, I saw the necessity for certain things to be in the management bailiwick, so to speak, to be able to make certain changes, to make things happen. I'm sure when I made decisions as a manager, it wasn't always appreciated. In fact, I know for sure it wasn't. But it was always for the good of the department or the good of the citizens that live in the community. There was never retribution or any thought of retribution involved with anything that I did as a manager, and likely not in our situation here as well. When I hear people talk about fear of retribution, it makes me wonder why. I'm hearing that a change was made, a legal change, not well-appreciated, but I didn't hear anything about actual the change was made because of... But I didn't hear anything about actual, the change was made because of retribution. And so I would like to think that the change was a management decision that was made legally and appropriately for the benefit of the district as seen by the manager of the district. And that is the way I view our superintendent's job. We hired that one and only person, this superintendent, to run this district the way he sees fit. Obviously, if there's some major legal issues, that's one thing. If you had a legal issue, of course. I sympathize with the fact that it's created, situation is not comfortable and in fact stressful for many. But I do support the superintendent in what he's done.
Thank you. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate our union brothers and sisters that have shown up tonight on behalf of your colleagues. And I also wanted to say congratulations to our sports teams for their accomplishments. And that's the end of my remarks.
Make it back to Weaver. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, President Cox. Thank you, Lily and Jack, for leading us in the pledge. Like Ms. May, I tend to agree. Malia and Alasia, it takes a lot to stand up and speak, especially when they did. We had a pretty large, full house at that time. Congratulations to the athletic teams. The presentations were really outstanding to me having been an educator. Again, the emphasis seems to be on all children and each child, which I think is really, really important. I want to thank for the WWA for being here tonight and being informative and voicing your opinions and your concerns. Any decision anybody makes, I don't care what walk of life it is, it always impacts people. And sometimes it's not positive and sometimes it is, but many people are impacted. The last thing I want to say, I think the last state championship team at this school district, well, at Wayne Memorial High, was eighty-two, eighty-three volleyball. So it's been forty years since Wayne Memorial High School had a state championship team. They had a basketball team played in the finals with Lorenzo Guess and his brother and they didn't, they didn't win. But that's a pretty big deal. And I may be wrong, we'll have to do some searching, but there might not be another.
Bowling, fifty, sixty.
Fifty, oh, bowling, okay, yep, thank you. But I don't know that we've had a Coach of the Year in probably a really, really long time. And I remember when Mr. Polk got here, my youngest son was one of the first guys on his team and he was a heck of a coach then. But to be awarded and chosen by his colleagues as a Coach of the Year, that's a pretty big thing. Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. I just, I first of all, I'd like to say thank you to my colleague and my friend, Melandie Hines, for her recognition. She's extremely hardworking, both on behalf of the school district and for just all kinds of good causes. Congratulations, Mel. I would like to say that the teachers of this school district are admired and respected by the members of the Board of Education. And I believe opportunities have presented themselves so that you know that too. Tonight, what we saw is people very concerned about something that conducted themselves in a respectful and dignified manner and really a credit to their profession and to the way that you voice your concerns with things. This evening, we talked a little bit about curriculum. And I think the mention was, we hadn't had a new curriculum in a very long time, wasn't that correct? We didn't have the money to buy curriculum. Just so everyone knows why. It's not that we didn't want it. We simply did not have the money to buy it. And I read the Curriculum Council, it says, per the Wayne Westland Education Association contract, and I'll go to the last sentence in that section. It says, "The decisions of the Curriculum Council shall be the final step in the process unless the superintendent and Board of Education retain the right to make the final determination." So there you have it. At some point, there has to be the final answer. And to not have the final answer be established invites chaos. So as Chief Neal said, we know you're not happy. We wish you were happy every single day. That's really what we want. But I know that you understand that there has to be, in the classroom, the teacher's the boss. And that's the way it's got to be, even if the kid might be right once in a while. The presentations that we saw tonight were very exciting and they take a lot of work for these people to put together. They not only have to stand at the back of the room for an hour getting their chance to talk, but they have to assemble all of this data and information in a way that actually makes sense and can be absorbed here in this room in a short period of time. So we appreciate those efforts. The other thing that we talked about tonight was the balanced assessment system having to do with how we assess the progress of our students. And this is such an important aspect because to the rest of the world, that is our school district. They don't see any of the things that go on here and out in the classroom, they just see that number. And I know the Board of Education wants to look at the number, but they want to look at a meaningful number that really tells us something. So I'm very happy for that work. And with that, thank you, everyone, for being here. We respect that you are here, you're welcome here anytime. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Move by Ms. Hines, support by Mr. Albrecht. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed, no. We are adjourned.